All right, good evening to you all. And welcome to the Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'd like to also welcome you to the City Council. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
And Mr. Snyder is away on travel. Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you. And do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor moved to adopt the meeting agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. So we have a busy night of proclamations, a lot of kids here tonight, which is exciting. And so let's get started with it. The first one is regarding the student representatives to boards and commissions through the CBC. Mr. Duncan, I think, will do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my great pleasure to thank three groups of people as we swear in a new cohort of youth representatives. First group are the committee, the Citizens for a Better City Committee, that interviewed the young folks, Nancy Brandon and Julie Krechman. I could ask them to step up to the podium here. I'd also like to thank the Appointments Committee for screening the applicants. And of course, finally, and most importantly, I'd like to thank the future leaders of tomorrow, the young people who are going to become non-voting members. The youth rep program has been going on now for several years, and it's always an inspiration. Yeah, if you all would come up, I'm going to ask Julie to read each of your names, and then the clerk will swear you in.
If you want to go right up here.
Right up there. Right in front of there.
Okay, it was a pleasure to interview all these young people, and we also appreciate all the members of boards and commissions who have agreed to accept these young people on their committees and boards. So we're recognizing Colter Adams to the Environmental Sustainability Council, Alec Autor to the Environmental Sustainability Council, Miles Heffernan, Human Services Advisory Council, Hunter Hicks to the Historical Commission, Evan Langford to the Architectural Advisory Board, Maroni Messfin to the Friends of the Falls Church Homeless Shelter, Daniel Ang, Architectural Advisory Board, Anna Tarter to the Creative Cauldron Board, Cole Tarter to the Economic Development Authority, and Charles Wells Tabola Adams to the Environmental Sustainability Council. Thank you.
I would like to introduce one more member of our committee.
Yes, yes. Oh, yes, Alex is here. Alex Boston.
Hi, everyone. My pleasure.
He set up the interviews.
Thank you for running the sign-up genius that enabled each of these young folks to get interviewed by, you know, veteran city activists such as yourself. Thank you, Alex.
And so now we're going to do the oath of office that all board members take before they serve, including the City Council. And just repeat after me, when I say state your name, state your name. When I say state your board, state your board name. So can you raise your right hand? I state your name. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support.
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
And the Constitution.
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform
Discharge.
all the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties.
as a member of the -- state your board name
State your board name.
-- according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities.
And you are sworn in. Thank you.
All right, congratulations. All right, congratulations to all. Thank you for your involvement in our community, and thank you to the CBC for organizing this fine event. So let's move on. Did you want to skip to that one? We'll skip that. All right, so we're actually going to take this a little bit out of order. We're expecting a few folks to turn up who are not here just yet. Why don't we move on to the proclamation regarding Gun Violence Awareness Month, and I believe the Vice Mayor will do the honors?
This is a proclamation declaring June 7th, 2019, as Gun Violence Awareness Day.
If you all could keep it down until you end up outside the room.
Wait a second. Whereas approximately 100 Americans are killed every day by gun violence, and many others are injured, and whereas protecting public safety is local government's highest responsibility, and whereas to honors those whose lives are cut short by shootings and those who are injured, a national coalition of organizations has designated the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the Friends of Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager shot and killed soon after her performance in the 2013 Presidential An inaugural Parade, asked classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange on her birthday, because the color orange is worn by hunters for safety and also symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas all citizens can help raise awareness about gun violence by pledging to wear orange on June 7th, 2019, to commemorate the Fifth Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and whereas Falls Church is committed to reducing gun violence, keeping firearms out of the wrong hands, and encouraging gun owners to practice safe and responsible gun ownership.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2019, as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge citizens to wear orange on June 7th, 2019, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. All right, welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for reading that proclamation. I just wanted to acknowledge this past year, we've had a lot of great advances in the gun violence prevention, and acknowledge the groups that support this community and me, particularly the moms that demand action, that come out and force each and every one of these council meetings to the parade, the Concerned Citizens Against Gun Violence that keep me abreast of all issues that are going around the region, the Brady Campaign in every town. I pledge next year, we will have their numbers in this proclamation as they keep growing in numbers. I also like to acknowledge the city, not only in the proclamations, but the changing of the ordinance this year that was key for long guns and vehicles, the PSA video that we've done for pneumatic guns with Lieutenant Steve Rau, and also some of the invitations I've had. I've had the privilege of presenting before the Moms Demand Action about the state of the city's gun actions, and actually TJ, because of Mary Beth Conley, asked me to go and do a safety talk with some kids. They have a presentation tomorrow night on gun safety throughout the community. So very privileged to be a part of all of that, and to be a part of the moms and the teams back here behind us that stand with us today. So I'd love for them to come forward and accept the proclamation with me if they could.
Absolutely, absolutely. Come on down and thank you for your great work.
Council, as they come down, we're having trouble with the speakers in the room right now, so if you all could speak up. We're recording, but we're not projecting in the room.
Okay, well, let's project. And I know Carol Luton has filled out a speaker slip. Would you like to speak now while your group is here? Or? All right, we thank you all for the great work you all are doing, and saw you in the Bay Awareness Week, and Mr. Z will do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor.
parade. That was quite a group you had there, so that was awesome.
Whereas the Chesapeake Bay is the largest and at one time the most productive estuary
Okay, hi, Carol Luton, 222 Midvale Street, Falls Church.
in the United States, spanning six states and the District of Columbia, and whereas the Chesapeake Bay watershed is an extraordinary and vital natural resource, as well as an
We would like to ask you to do one more step for us for gun violence prevention.
integral part of the historic and heritage of the Commonwealth, and the Chesapeake Bay
We have envelopes with postcards to Senator Warner, Senator Kane, and Congressman Byer.
is fed by 50 major tributaries, including the Susquehanna, Potomac, Rappahannock, York,
If you would please just say thank you, please act, whatever you'd like to say, and then
and James Rivers, and contains more than 15 trillion gallons of water. And whereas the Chesapeake Bay stretches 200 miles from Hadgris, Maryland to Norfolk,
send them off, sign them and send them off, we would greatly appreciate that.
Virginia has an average depth of 21 feet, and ranges from 3.4 to 35 miles wide, supports
We are hoping to send about 300 postcards this weekend to our legislators after the
348 species of finfish, 173 species of shellfish, and more than 3,600 species of plant and
parade yesterday, so we'd appreciate your participation. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much.
animal life, including 2,700 types of plants, and more than 16 species of underwater grasses.
And we've got a proclamation we'd like to give to some or all of you.
(inaudible).
And whereas the Chesapeake Bay area is home to more than 17 million people, many of whom rely upon the bay for the livelihood and recreational activities, and is an important source of food for the Commonwealth and the East Coast of the United States, the Chesapeake Bay produces more than 500 million pounds of seafood harvests each year. And whereas the rich history, pivotal economic importance, and astounding beauty of the Chesapeake Bay watershed never ceases to amaze residents and visitors alike, and whereas the city of Falls Church is divided into two local watersheds, Trips Run and Four Mile Run, both of which are important to the character and quality of life of the city, and ultimately affect the health of Potomac River and the Chesapeake Bay.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June 1st through the 9th, 2019, as Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of this observance, and to participate in events, activities, and educational programs designed to increase awareness of the importance of the Chesapeake Bay in our community. Is there anyone from the community who's going to receive this proclamation?
I'm asking that you get the children up here, because we're doing this for their future.
All right, that sounds good. You guys want to come up and get a picture, receive the proclamation?
Sure.
Let's do it, guys. Come on up.
Yeah. You guys want pins? You don't want pins, do you? All right. Come on up. Come on up. Want a pin? Do you want a pin? You do? All right, you're cute. All right. How about you? You want one too? Who wants a pin? You? Hang on, how about you guys stand here? We'll get you.
First in first.
Of course, you don't have to stand from them.
Yeah, no, it's your group.
All right, who can get a pin? You want to keep that? How about that? How about? All right, you can't keep it. You guys want a pin? How about you? You, the guy with the headband, get one? You get one? You get a pin?
He's a repeat. Mr. Mayor, you're so prolific in handing out little pins, and every six-year-old in the city has a head.
I know. All right, well, I want that headband. Get a headband off? Is that what that is? That looks cool. I like it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We will be sending the proclamation to the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and they have a lot of activities on their website. If you look up Chesapeake Bay Foundation, you'll notice it's an eight-day week that they celebrate, so they have an extra Saturday, and there's where they have activities.
All right, sounds good. Sounds good. All right, our last proclamation is declaring June 2019 as Immigrant Heritage Month in the City of Falls Church, and Ms. Hardy will do the honors.
Great. I know we were expecting welcoming Falls Church to join us, but I think they must be stuck in traffic, so maybe during public comment, if they're here in time, they can give us an update on their work since they last spoke to us. As one of two council members who are immigrants, I'm proud to read this for Falls Church. Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, and whereas immigrants continue to grow businesses, innovate, strengthen our economy, and create jobs in the City of Falls Church, and whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation, and whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but have also campaigned to create a more just society for all Americans, and whereas despite these countless contributions, the role of immigrants is building and enriching our nation, has frequently been overlooked and undervalued.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June 2019 as Immigrant Heritage Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize the contributions of immigrants in the city, the Commonwealth, and the nation.
And is there anyone? Okay, come on forward. You're welcome to speak if you'd like as well.
I have a few words. 13 years ago, I made City of Falls Church in Virginia my home. I'm originally from Bolivia, and I couldn't be more proud to call myself Virginian, a Virginian-American. And I just want to say thank you so much for recognizing this month. It means a lot for my Bolivian community, for my German community, for my Vietnamese community. Just want to say thank you.
You.
Yeah, yeah. I was born in Guatemala, but I've grown up, well, mostly in Tennessee. I'm just here. I wish you was here last summer. Yeah, I did. I lived in Falls Church last summer.
All right. Could you state your names and addresses for the record for the clerk?
Yeah. My name is Maria Venegas, and I stayed here in Falls Church last summer while I did an internship in DC.
Gotcha.
My name is Giancarla Rojas, and I lived in Falls Church for 13 years.
All right, well, congratulations on being part of our community. We're delighted to have you here, so thank you both for coming out today. We've got a, how about a photo with you guys in the? She gets it. One, two, three. There you go. Okay, I think that's it for proclamations. I'm sorry, I think that's the last of our proclamations. Are there any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
No.
All right, well, now we're moving on to receipt of public comment. Will you summarize the written comments?
Certainly. We have Mr. David Hale of 602 Northwest Street wrote to commend the bike share program and the station locations. Bruno Delmorel, who's a George Mason High School student, wrote in support of senior tax relief, and he's actually asked a couple of questions, and we've been back and forth a little bit about how the process works, so that's been interesting. And then we have actually three folks who are here from Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. They wrote in, Alec Mahini, Brooks Beck, and Eli Kulak, and they wrote with a proposal for a plastic bag tax, and I believe they're here to speak to you tonight.
Well, it's not your turn yet, but it's getting there. So I'll tell you what, actually, it is your turn. Let's go ahead and have you guys go first. So our first speaker, we've got three speakers, and you guys can speak together, you can speak separately, it's whatever you'd like. First speaker is Mr. Kulak, Mr. Beck, and Mr. Mahini. So you guys come on down. You can speak one together, or however you'd like to do it.
Sing together, yeah.
Okay, well, get up to the microphone if you don't mind, and if you could state your name for the record, that'd be great, who you are.
Yes, I'm Eli Kulak.
I'm Brooks Beck.
I'm Alec Mahini.
Okay.
And we are here with a tax proposal on plastic bags.
All right, let's hear it.
All right. This year, we chose to research water pollution and how it affects our local waterways. We found that over 80% of the Chesapeake's waters are affected by water pollution, and we would like to change that. Our research has led us to propose a 10-cent tax on plastic bags in stores that are located in Falls Church City. We believe that it would be a good idea for a few reasons. One, if we put the tax on the bags, it would help prevent litter around the city. Two, it can help spread the message that pollution is bad for the environment. Three, if people pay the tax, you will get money from it. If the tax is put on the bags, we believe that it will benefit Falls Church City and the environment. Have you ever noticed the litter around Falls Church? Our first reason for implementing a tax is that the tax could help prevent waste. This could be an opportunity to decrease the waste in this city. When Chicago implemented a 7-cent tax, they decreased the percent of disposable plastic bags used by 30% in two years, according to WTTW News. This could be a chance to make our city one of the cleanest cities in the DC area. Pollution is one of the biggest issues in the world right now, and if we put the tax on the plastic bags, we could be one of the first cities in Virginia to say that we need to take action to prevent plastic bags from ruining our waters. Virginia currently has no legislation against plastics, and if we can be the first to cut back, others in Virginia may join in, and we could help pass laws to prevent plastic waste.
Our last reason is that if the tax is put on the bags, then Falls Church City will get money from it. Using that money, Falls Church can help pay for projects that they might do in the future and more. The tax could be sent to school systems, local businesses, recycling centers, and construction, to name a few. This can help our economy. Essentially, this tax could really help Falls Church City financially. Ireland gained 9.6 million euros, 10.7 million dollars, from a 0.15 euro tax, 17 cents here, 17 cents tax, on plastic bags, and so we could definitely gain money from this. As you can see, we think that this tax might help Falls Church City economically and environmentally. This tax could help pay for future projects in Falls Church City, but it would mainly be a way to tell everybody that it would, that we all need to cut back on plastic in order to preserve our ecosystems. This small tax could be the start of something big that could completely change our world. In conclusion, this tax will be a way to tell everybody that pollution is bad, and we need to preserve our world. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You did a great job. Isn't that awesome, everybody?
Mayor.
Mr. Z is our resident environmental expert and has leadership positions in the state of Virginia and around the DC area in environmental issues, so I'm going to let him speak to your.
Thank you for coming forward. The future does belong to you, and you represent what is called the butterfly effect. Do you know what that is? And so you are the butterflies at this point, and I am pleased to tell you that this coming summer, we will again, through the good work of the Vice Chair of the Virginia Municipal League Environmental Quality Subcommittee, put forward a proposal to the legislation, and if legislation goes the way we expect it to, we think we'll have more success, to incentivize or disincentivize all single-use plastics. We're not just talking about bags, we're talking about straws, we're talking about polystyrene, we're talking about a whole host of things. Last week, a submersible made it to the deepest part of the Marianas Trench, the deepest part over seven miles underneath the ocean, and guess what they found? Plastic trash. This is not a world we want to live in, so thank you so much. I will do what I can to make sure that we enact a ban, or to disincentivize, or incentivize the issue of single-use plastics. Thank you again.
Now we've got Mr. Dakin. Is he here? Sean? Oh, there he is. Okay.
All right, I'm Sean Dakin. I live in 124 Woodyer Circle here in Falls Church, and I first wanted to commend everybody on the bike share. I bike shared over here tonight, so that's why I'm a little sweaty, and I have my helmet over there. But today, I wanted to come and speak to you about gun violence prevention based on tonight's proclamation. First, I wanted to thank everybody here for ongoing support for keeping our community safe, keeping our city safe, keeping our kids safe, and I just wanted to thank you for that. And then what I want to say, though, is that I think we could be doing, you know, a lot more. That has nothing to do with laws and regulations, that has everything to do with encouraging, educating, and letting our adults know that the number-one way that kids commit suicide is by getting the guns from their parents, right? And so what can we do as a community to keep our students and schools and people safe? We can do a lot more on safe storage, education, and communication, right? So in the last decade, I'm looking at an article in the New York Times that was published on May 13th. that pollution is bad for the environment. Three, if people pay the tax, you will get money from it. If the tax is put on the bags, we believe that it will benefit Falls Church City and the environment. Have you ever noticed the litter around Falls Church? Our first reason for implementing a tax is that the tax could help prevent waste. This could be an opportunity to decrease the waste in this city. When Chicago implemented a seven cent tax, they decreased the percent of disposable plastic bags used by thirty percent in two years, according to WTTW News. This could be a chance to make our city one of the cleanest cities in the DC area. Pollution is one of the biggest issues in the world right now, and if we put the tax on the plastic bags, we could be one of the first cities in Virginia to say that we need to take action to prevent plastic bags from ruining our waters. Virginia currently has no legislation against plastics, and if we can be the first to cut back, others in Virginia may join in, and we could help pass laws to prevent plastic waste.
Our last reason is that if the tax is put on the bags, then Falls Church City will get money from it. Using that money, Falls Church can help pay for projects that they might do in the future and more. The tax could be sent to school systems, local businesses, recycling centers, and construction, to name a few. This can help our economy. Essentially, this tax could really help Falls Church City financially. Ireland gained nine point six million euros, ten point seven million dollars, from a point fifteen euro tax, seventeen cents here, seventeen cents tax, on plastic bags, and so, we could definitely gain money from this. As you can see, we think that this tax might help Falls Church City economically and environmentally. This tax could help pay for future projects in Falls Church City, but it would mainly be a way to tell everybody that it would, that we all need to cut back on plastic in order to preserve our ecosystems. This small tax could be the start of something big that could completely change our world. In conclusion, this tax will be a way to tell everybody that pollution is bad, and we need to preserve our world. Thank you.
Thank you guys, you did a great job. Isn't that awesome, everybody?
Mayor.
Mr. Z is our resident environmental expert and has leadership positions in the state of Virginia and around the DC area in environmental issues, so I'm gonna let him speak to your...
Thank you for coming forward. The future does belong to you, and you represent what is called the butterfly effect. Do you know what that is? And, so you are the butterflies at this point, and I am pleased to tell you that this coming summer, we will, again, through the good work of the Vice Chair of the Virginia Municipal League Environmental Quality Subcommittee, put forward a proposal to the legislation, and if legislation goes the way we expect it to, we think we'll have more success, to incentivize or disincentivize all single-use plastics. We're not just talking about bags, we're talking about straws, we're talking about polystyrene, we're talking about a whole host of things. Last week, a submersible made it to the deepest part of the Marianas Trench, the deepest part over seven miles underneath the ocean, and guess what they found? Plastic trash. This is not a world we want to live in, so thank you so much. I will do what I can to make sure that we enact a ban, or to disincentivize, or incentivize the issue of single-use plastics. Thank you again.
So, we've had that speaker, now we've got Mr. Dakin. Is he here? Sean? Oh, there he is.
All right, I'm Sean Dakin, I live in 124 Wood Ear Circle, here in Falls Church, and I first wanted to commend everybody on the bike share. I bike shared over here tonight, so, that's why I'm a little sweaty, and I have my helmet over there. But, today, I wanted to come and speak to you about gun violence prevention, based on tonight's proclamation. First, I wanted to thank everybody here for ongoing support, for keeping our community safe, keeping our city safe, keeping our kids safe, and I just wanted to thank you for that. And then what I want to say, though, is that I think we could be doing, you know, a lot more. That has nothing to do with laws and regulations, that has everything to do with encouraging, educating, and letting our adults know that the number-one way that kids commit suicide is by getting the guns from their parents, right? And so what can we do as a community to keep our students and schools and people safe? We can do a lot more on safe storage, education, and communication, right? So, in the last decade, I'm looking at an article in the New York Times that was published on May 13th, and they say, "In the last decade, guns have killed more than fourteen thousand American children alone." A startling number of these deaths, more than a third, were classified as suicides, and many, around six percent, were accidents, right? And they go on lots of research to essentially say that these kids, they don't go buy guns, they get the guns from their family and their friends. And how do they get those guns? They get them because they're unlocked, and they're in really bad storage. So, I think that we can do a lot more. So, we can educate in our education system, I don't know if there's somebody here from the school board, but when people go to register their kids on InfoSnap, they're asked to sign a technology form, "Yes, I read the technology use policy, and I'm gonna make sure that my kid uses technology great." We ask them to do a whole bunch of things. We could easily also ask them to just say, "Hey, guess what? Did you know that the number-one way that kids commit suicide is by unlocked guns? Please acknowledge the fact that you lock your guns at home." All right? And then I don't want to really say this, but the reality is, is that most mass shootings, Columbine, Parkland, all these places, they happen because the kids got their guns from their family, from their parents. These are all wealthy communities, just like ours, and they got their guns from parents and caregivers who did not lock their guns. So I think this is something we could do. It doesn't require Richmond, it doesn't require writing a law, it requires us having fortitude to speak up and say that this is an important part of keeping our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. And I see, yes?
Sean?
Yeah?
I was just gonna make a comment to the kids, actually. It's in relation to your comments as well. Yeah, sure. That asked my permission. I just wanted to talk to the kids for a second. I wanted to commend you guys for coming in here and being passionate about a particular topic. I tell my kids all the time that littering, in my opinion, is one of the greatest forms of laziness. It just doesn't take a lot to put a piece of trash in a trashcan. But more specifically, there's some pretty heavy topics that folks have talked about tonight, and as you guys will find, growing up, and I tell my kids this all the time, sometimes it doesn't take a stroke of genius to solve a problem, sometimes it just takes sheer effort and perseverance, and it takes you getting other people on board and evangelizing that message to get them behind whatever it is that you guys are passionate about, so whether it's littering, if it's gun safety, if it's something else that you find yourself motivated and inspired by, you guys go around your schools, get people involved, push them, have them make the effort, because in some cases, you can't rely on just politicians, you can't rely on neighbors, sometimes you can't even rely on parents to be as inspired as you guys are, so push your friends, you know, mobilize, get folks behind the cause, and I commend you guys for coming up here, and you're very articulate, so thank you very much.
All right, that was good. Are there any other speakers? I saw Mr. Bozen may have stepped outside. I think he was here earlier for the welcoming of Falls Church, and I don't know if he's... Bob, would you mind just poking your head outside and see if Paul Bozen's out there would like to speak to the, to that topic? Is there anyone else who would like to speak right now, make any public comment? About to close, public comment, at least at this point. Why don't we take any council requests while we're waiting? Is there any council requests, anyone has? Okay. Are you thinking up one, Phil?
Well, I thought you were looking to kill some time.
Oh, not really. All right, Ms. Hardy has one.
I do have one, but she's got one, get it.
Mr. Shields, about a month ago, we heard from the residents of Brook Drive about their flooding. I just want to make sure that we had our stormwater person following up on that concern.
Well, we have met with them at their property, and I followed up with them today, just, and left a message with them. There is some information we can share with them, and we'll continue that effort with them.
I think the main thing that might be of interest to other people in the public is whether that stormwater, local stormwater fund could be used to help offset costs that homeowners might have to pay to remediate stormwater issues, because I think that was a new use of those funds that we hadn't learned about before. So if that is something that we think we can do, then we should let people, other people, know, because I think it's not unique to that, those residents of Brook Drive.
So, just briefly, we have looked into that grant opportunity, and what it is specifically for is for homeowners associations or individuals who have a BMP or, you know, a registered stormwater facility on their property, to help them with the maintenance of that. And so that's what those grants are for, it's not specifically for flood mitigation, it's really for water quality improvements. And so that's one of the things that we're communicating back to the Ziegler's with their good suggestion on that, but unfortunately, that won't be probably the silver bullet, but we'll continue to work with them.
All right, Mr. Duncan.
My question was for Ms. Mester, and perhaps the Chief, too, raised by a citizen over the weekend. So during office, during off-hours at City Hall, until we get everything hooked up, if somebody's got a concern they want to bring to the Police Department, normally, back in the old days, they would walk in, push the button, and walk into the room downstairs, but that, that's not active right now. Do we have like an interim approach, and is it posted somewhere?
This information was raised to me, and I know Susan was reaching out to the Chief today on that.
In our transition, when we were at 400, the process was if someone came in after hours, they would call dispatch, and then the officer would meet them at 400. So the same process in terms, if they want to call the non-emergency number, if it's obviously a non-emergency, 703-248-5050, and the officer could meet them at City Hall and resolve the issue after hours.
That's what I understood was being done. So, is that, can we like put that on a piece of paper somewhere and stick it up on the door?
Office of Communications is working with the Chief to make sure it's posted and the proper wording.
Okay, and when we're finished with wiring everything up, it'll return sort of the way it used to be, right? If you come after hours, you'll push a button, and somebody on the other side of the door and the window and dispatch will be able to let you in and hear your...
Exactly. They'll be led through City Hall to the police lobby.
Yeah, right, okay. All right, it was just something that came up over the weekend, and thanks for clearing that up.
All right, well, let's move on to, okay, Vice Mark Connelly.
Mr. Shields, I have a request from a resident of Marshall Street who was concerned about the street traffic calming that occurred there last summer. There were several traffic speed bumps that were replaced, and the community appreciates the effort and thinks that maybe more needs to be done. And then, a further request was, could we look at the entire neighborhood there and see what happens during school traffic and commuter traffic on those four streets that are parallel that head down towards TJ? But particularly in the Marshall Street, is there any kind of follow-up that needs to be done? There is follow-up that needs to be done, to see how that is working? What's the procedure there that city staff does? They make a traffic calming adjustment, and then how much, how long does it exist before then there's follow-up to see if it's actually working?
So, with the work that was done last summer to install a new sidewalk and repave the street, the city put the speed bumps back that had already gone through the process. At that time, there was a discussion with the neighborhood that if they wanted to pursue additional neighborhood traffic calming program, Mr. Sykes was there to describe that process for them and to invite them to follow that process if they wanted additional controls. And I think since the new paving was done, we have not heard, you know, from the neighborhood seeking additional, obviously you have, but I don't think we have directly. So if you have a follow-up for us, we'd be happy to do that, but we're not aware of a pending request.
So then, the next step would be to do an additional neighborhood traffic calming?
Through the NTC, yes.
If fifty percent of the neighborhood agrees?
That's right.
Through the NTC process. What about the thought that that whole neighborhood suffers because there's so many people coming off of 29 down towards TJ in the morning and the afternoon, and it needs to be looked at as a whole organism instead of just an individual street? Do we have a program?
We could certainly do that. My memory is that for other streets, we have tried to look at it holistically, and anything you do on one street is going to push traffic to the other streets, and so you do have to think about the whole neighborhood. For the NTC, one issue that I think has come up in the past is that if you have the petition process for a larger neighborhood, that decreases the likelihood actually of getting over the level of support that you need, and so the neighbors might not actually prefer that neighborhood process being formally the way that they would follow it. But anyway, we can follow up to explore that.
Okay. I think there's a need, if you do look at Marshall, if the NTC does take up the Marshall Street cause, then yeah, you slow down Marshall Street, and the streets on either side of it will then absorb all that traffic, so we do need to look at it holistically. Thank you.
All right, unless there's anything else, let's move on to the report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to provide just a few updates, but also start off with some words of thanks. And the first is thanks for all who participated in the Memorial Day ceremony and festivities over this weekend, and a couple people to single out. First, Danny Schlitt and Scarlett Williams with their Racking Parks Program, and that whole team for organizing the event. City Police and DPW and OCOM are always in support of that very large effort. And really, just thank you for everybody who came to join us in both the very sober and somber remembrance of our fallen heroes, as well as a joyful celebration of our community. We think it was a great day. It was made more complicated this year by the storms that occurred on Thursday night, and so what preceded the big effort for Memorial Day was a multi-all-day and all-night effort to clear brush. And so, thank you for, to Mike Whitfield and Robert Goff and our DPW team, our police team, and OCOM for working that storm event, and for Cindy Mester for her work with Dominion. At the height of the storm, we had 2,500 accounts down, which is about forty percent of the city was off the grid. Dominion did bring everybody back online by about 11 o'clock on Friday, if I recall, 8:00 PM Saturday. Okay. The brush removal, there is still brush out there in the parks and areas, but we did get all the streets cleared by, everything that was able to be cleared by Friday night, and then anything that was involved in power lines had to wait until Dominion came to clear those lines. So that was, it made it sort of a special event this year, and also thank you to the public for your patience as we went through that storm. It is June. June is traditionally, in the city of Falls Church, probably our roughest month weather-wise. That was the month of the derecho and many other memorable storms, and we do have forecast storms for Wednesday night, so we'll be monitoring it very closely. Also, after every event, we do a after-action review, and we're gonna work with staff on sitting down with everybody just to review how we did, what worked well, what are the things that we learned from this event, so we can apply it for the next storm. A couple other words of just notable things. One, the downtown plaza is now open to the public, and this was an effort funded by the EDA, and we're very pleased that it got opened for Memorial Day. The city's EDC, Letty Hardy, and Phil Duncan in particular have been active in promoting and sort of working through the details of this project, but Jim Snyder and Becky Witzman, Akita Ruzi, and Alice Dorga have been our staff leads for this project, once it converted from kind of a design-build with a contractor over to much more of a kind of a homegrown, locally sourced, and staff working with community project, to simplify it and make it a warm and welcoming place for the public. So, we're looking forward to that. It will continue to evolve as time goes on with lighting and with additional features. We want it to be a flexible space, it can be programmed, and change as the demand for that space changes. Lastly, I'll just note the North Virginia South Park Avenue sidewalk by North Virginia. That construction started today with the tree fencing, and so people should see on the street that sidewalk going in this week. So that is all I wanted to report on tonight, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
One quick question about the downtown park. Does it have similar hours to other parks where you can't use it past dark?
No, because it's gonna be lit, it will be, it will be an after-dark park.
Okay.
It's from dawn to 10:00 PM.
Dawn to 10:00 PM.
All right, anything else? Mr. Z?
I want to just mention again that the extraordinary work that the city undertook, it's, our big day with the parade on Memorial Day is, it takes a lot of work to get there, and when you sprinkle the condiment of trees down and neighbors screaming, and to get that cleared, I encountered Robert Goff, I said hello to him, he was a little grumpy, understandable, but I'm sure he's forgiven. It all turned out very well, so thank you so much.
Robert was grumpy because I was sending him emails about that tree at Great Falls in Lincoln, but that reminds me to, you know, kudos to that getting resolved in, you know, pretty short order. I mean, it took a couple of days, but, you know, that large tree which was hanging over the Don Byer Fun Run walk route really needed to get taken down, and, you know, many people were involved, you know, the tenant, the landlord, the property manager, you know, innumerable staff, and some of whose names you mentioned, and others, and by Saturday night, I think, Sunday night, the leaning tree was, yeah, Sunday night, leaning tree was taken down, and the thoroughfare was safe. Also, I wanted to thank whoever did the low-tech, hand-lettered "Free Parking Here" sign in front of the Kaiser Garage, which just gives you an extra level of comfort that, yeah, it is okay in spite of the other signage there to use that garage, and wasn't fancy, but it was effective, I thought.
All right, Mary Beth Connelly, you're next.
Yes, and I would like to thank Nick Benton and the Falls Church News Press for what you do leading up to the Memorial Day Parade, because the section that you put into the news press every year with a story about the grand marshal and the king and queen of the parade is wonderful publicity for our parade that we wouldn't get anywhere else, and that you list all the entrance and everything. I think that's really important to making it a community event, so I want to thank you for that.
You may want to quote her on that.
I just wanted to get the paper this week.
Is there any other comments? It was a great day, it really was a fun day, and it went off, I think, without a hitch, at least best I could tell, so staff did a fantastic job, as you do every year, so thank you. Anything else, or should we move on to business on the agenda? All right, we're moving on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Oop, yes. This is a resolution requiring a public hearing, TR 19-19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation public improvement bonds and notes.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. The item before you requests authority to issue debt as a two-step process for up to seventy-six point four six five million in the next coming few months. So the total debt assumed over the two transactions as a two-step process would be seventy-six point five million. I'll just give a little background. The City Council adopted a full CIP requiring the city to issue approximately 160 million in debt to cover, in three tranches, to cover major capital projects, including the high school, City Hall, the library renovations, acquisition of parkland, and other smaller capital projects. The first tranche was issued last year, twenty-two point five million for the high school design phase, as well as the library design phase, and construction for City Hall. The second tranche for this year is this request that we have for you for seventy-six point five million to be issued as a two-step process. The first step, and in this sequence, the first step would be to issue 20 million in notes, short-term notes, before the end of this fiscal year, that is June 30th, issued as a line of credit, where principal will be drawn down only as needed. For two projects, George Mason High School construction, fifteen point three million, and acquisition of parkland, that's the Fellow's property, four point seven million, so totaling 20 million. The cost of issuance for this would be, is estimated to be 75,000, and would be met using debt service savings from the current fiscal year, resulting from better interest rates and reduced principal that we experienced this year. and reduced principal that we experienced this year. The intention is the second step would be to issue debt, general obligation bonds in this fall after we have the receipt of the first payment from the economic development piece from the West Falls Church project, hopefully in July. After that, in fall, we expect to issue the general obligation bond for no more than 76.465 million, which would repay any outstanding balance on the notes that we issue now and not to exceed total debt issuance between both the transactions over 76.45. That would include construction for George Mason project, acquisition of the Fellows, I mean, the subset, 20 million is a subset of the larger piece, primarily the bigger project, and that would be the 7.3 million for the library renovation, sewer and stormwater and a couple other miscellaneous smaller projects, and including costs of issuance, fixed costs of 600,000, no more than 600,000, and underwriters discount and 2% contingency. Normally, we budget for 1% contingency, but since this is a larger amount. These terms are very flexible. The interest rates on the notes are expected to be no more than 4%, although the rates are much lower right now. The terms here are, again, as I state, are for flexibility purposes. The general obligation bond would be, for George Mason High School project, would be a 30-year level debt, leaving the third tranche for George Mason for construction balance to be 51 million. And all other projects are 20 million, 20-years-level principal project term for the second issuance. With that, I conclude my report and open for questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's open it to questions anyone might have. Anyone have any questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Ms. Bawa. Either question for Mr. Shields or Ms. Bawa. Could one of you reiterate that sequence events we talked about last time? Because again, this two-step process is a little different than what we talked about originally, which is we kind of issued the 76 million as a second tranche. I think it's helpful for all of us to really understand the sequence events as well as the public because it is different.
So the sequence of events is executing the comprehensive agreement, placing the payment number one, which is 6.5 million dollars, into escrow. It will stay in escrow pending the land use approvals, which would be considered by city council on July 8. Then we would allow that 30-day period to elapse after that approval. And after that point, the payments in escrow would convert to a hard payment to the City of Falls Church. After that has occurred, we would schedule our meeting with the rating agencies and proceed with all the steps that you need to issue the 76 million dollar bond, which is the second tranche for the high school plus the other items that Ms. Bawa listed.
So before that second tranche is issued, is there another check-in point with us or does this resolution give you guys authority to go ahead?
Well, we will check in with you. We're, A, we're not going to proceed with any debt until the money is, till the CA is signed. We would not proceed with the rating agency meeting or the issuance of the debt until the money moves from escrow to a hard payment. So if either of those things don't happen, we will be with the council to discuss it with you and not take any steps in terms of having the city be indebted without those preconditions.
Perfect. I think I'm comfortable with the sequence for the high school project, given how involved we've been and all the things that need to happen. I think I want to make sure that the timeline for issuing the second tranche also marries up well to where the library project is. And then we have an opportunity to talk about the library project and where the, I think, 60% estimates are going to come in, and that should happen well before we have to issue this, right?
That's correct.
Great. My second question has to do with the interest rate of the 20-year, I guess, short-term notes. You said it was going to be no more than 4%. Do we expect that to be less than what the 76 million dollar bond is going to be or more? Because I think there's an assumption here that we would pay off the 20-year notes.
Right. So the way the notes work is that the line of credit works is that we get issuance that we will only draw down and pay only interest on it, so the whole principal remains. However, it would be as we draw down, so we're only making interest payments. So we have to pay it at some point with the general obligation bonds. If it's not this second tranche, then it is the next bond, the third tranche that we, for some reason, if we decide to move this, the terms are much better. And we would pay the total outstanding balance with the general obligation. So the interest rate, back to your question on the interest rates, from what I know in the recent one month that other jurisdictions have got is about 2.65% five-year fix. So that's comparable these days. However, the second tranche, the general obligation, would be issued in fall. Our model included an estimate at 4.5%, although hopefully market will not jump from 2.5% to 4.5% that quickly, but it's better to be conservative.
Generally, I support you, you know, only borrowing what we need, so I think the plan sounds fine. And again, I remember from last week's discussion, this two-step process is costing us an incremental 75,000?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And also, I wanted to mention is that the bond council provided some edits to the resolution on Friday after the material had published by the city clerk. So just want to highlight, most of the edits are just language-based except for the sentence on line 457 that we just handed out. That allows for flexibility for the notes, of course, saying that the debt issuance would not exceed 76.465 million, however, that we would pay it out either with this issuance or the second issuance, depending on whatever council determines it to be best interest.
All right. Thank you. Other comments, questions? Mr. Duncan?
So what was the interest rate? You said again?
2.65% fix for five years.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Shields, when do you anticipate the CA being signed?
We anticipate that it'll be signed this week. We're pushing for it to be signed tomorrow. This is the stack of documents right here. The lawyers are still going through the final last details, and so that's why the signing didn't occur today, but we're right on the verge of executing the agreement.
All right. I know a whole lot of hard work's gone in by you and the city attorney and a whole bunch of other people, but we greatly thank both of you and on behalf of the rest of the city staff for the great work you've done and the extraordinary amount of time you put into getting us where we are today, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none of the matters close to the public, does anyone else have any additional comments or anything they wanted to say?
They are moved to adopt TR-19-19.
We have a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next item.
Good evening again. This item, sorry.
It's okay. Want to get that.
This is a first reading of an ordinance, TO-19-06, Ordinance to amend Ordinance 1994 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2019 for the general fund and the capital improvements program funds.
Good evening again. So this ordinance requests 706,987 increase in appropriation to the general fund, bringing the budget at the end of this year to 94.757 million. So the main highlights, there are no changes to this since we discussed it at the work session last Monday, but I'll highlight a few of the things that we discussed. It includes a request for appropriation of 300,000 for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project to pay for additional legal expenses, commercial real estate advisor fees and subdivision plat services to be paid out of projected interest revenue in excess of the amount budgeted for the current fiscal year, since we're getting good interest on our unassigned fund balance and on investments that are in the bank. Secondly, is 40,000 appropriation, reappraisal of bonds, 2016 bonds for the, to build the necessary asphalt base at the property yard for the mulching process, the leaf mulching at the property yard. This is due to the construction at the school. The staff is recommending that instead of to use these funds that were appropriated earlier for the spreader rack to be used for this purpose. And this is to the process right now, up till now, what's happening at the high school campus site, which needs to move. The next is a request for appropriation of 750,000 for the city hall, 350,000 of that to come from the interest revenue from the 2018 bond issuance that we did last year, the 22.5 million, the interest revenue on bond proceeds may be used to fund projects for which they are issued or to pay for debt service on the applicable bonds. The remaining 400,000 is requested as transfers from underspending in departments in the current fiscal year, resulting from information technology, from vacancies and sheriff's department as a result of reduced jail costs due to lower number of inmates. Also, we are proposing to transfer 150,000 from current year's debt service to capital reserve. This is, as mentioned earlier, this is due to better interest rates on the first tranche issuance that we did for 22 million in 2018. Other than this, we have reprogramming of funds in the transportation fund, in the special transportation fund, which includes moving 25,000 in unspent funds from downtown reinvestment project to South Washington POA to cover additional costs of utility undergrounding in the South Washington corridor, transfer of unspent funds in bridge replacement project of 66,000 plus for traffic signal program, and reappraisal of 40,000 of the WNOD Trail Great Street project for the Walter Mass Plaza project along the trail. That grant is a three-year grant and request of reappraisal. It was a fiscal year '17 grant. With that, I conclude my report and open for questions.
Sorry, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm kidding. No, the whole thing. It just went on and on. I'm sorry. All right, do we have any comments or questions? In a good way.
Next time, I'll get animation for you all. Make it interesting.
All right. Yes, Mr. Littenhouse?
So where are we in terms of total cost for city hall?
So this is the first increase that we are requesting to the city hall budget to cover the, we came to council for additional contract.
You say first, like you're expecting a second.
No, but just to make it clear that, you know, we did bring a contract increase request earlier for LV Comsec and also requests of when we moved from the transfer, when we had to overstay at the temporary location, so to cover the rent for that. So total bond issuance so far has been up to 17.6 million, and the 750 would bring it a little over 18 for the total project over last, whatever, many years, the planning and the art design and the construction.
Can you just repeat that number?
Bringing the total to 18.4 million.
What do we expect it to be initially? And maybe this even predates me.
Predates Dave Snyder.
The original budget was 17.6, if I recall correctly. Is that right?
That's correct. That's the budget, the project budget that was budgeted at, that we're issuing bonds for.
That was the original, original budget.
No, that's what was approved, when the council approved the guaranteed maximum price, that was the budget.
Got it.
And just, you know, this was, this project had a long history and we had feasibility studies, we had architecture, we had design, et cetera. So the original construction budget was 13.3, and now the construction budget is 13.3 plus the 700.
14 million.
Yeah, so just over 14 million in terms of construction cost.
For construction. Okay. Yeah, for some reason, I had like 14 something stuck in my head.
That's right.
Makes sense. In terms of any ongoing disputes and potential increase in costs that need to be allocated for this, where does that stand?
So we, we're working those issues and we have a meeting this week with HIT Construction where we will go through the issues. We'll have more to report to the council as this unfolds.
Okay. All right. Mr. Duncan or Mr. Z?
So let me just follow on what Ross said. So it's fitting and proper that we should have those discussions about cost issues with HIT, but I wonder if now is an opportunity to ask about what we have value engineered out of the city hall project? Is there a list of said things? And I'm specifically interested in the AV situation in chambers, in the new chambers, because I understood that there were going to be big monitors that would help the public see what it is that we're talking about. Not sure those are still in or out, but I'm sure Ms. Mester can tell me.
For that specific item, there are two projectors and large screens that the public will have on both sides of the chambers for viewing. And at the dais, council will have smaller monitors available so that you'll be able to see directly the presentation as well.
So those screens, are they arrayed behind us, as was in the original drawings, or are they flanking the side of the chambers?
The two screens are flanked in the sides of the chambers, on the window side and the parallel other side, and then at the dais, there'll be screens that face you.
Did we originally?
The audience will have the large screens.
Am I wrong? Could somebody help me out here? Did we originally think that we were going to try to put monitors behind us so that you wouldn't have to look this way or is?
We did originally try that, but the distance from the fuse to that and the size of the TV screens that could be mounted didn't make for good visibility, so in studying the technical solution, that was not recommended.
Ah, I see. So then the screens that will be there will be screens like this or drop screens like the old chambers?
Drop screens because they had better visibility on the size that we needed for the full-room viewing. Much better projectors, however, and lighting.
So the money's being put into what throws the picture onto those screens, so the clarity of them will be more like a monitor rather than a home movie from 1963.
Correct, and the plan is not to have emergency lighting over the screens, which we had in the former chambers.
Okay.
Council has approved the contract for the AV broadcasting, which was just under 400,000 for Chambers, Dogwood and Laurel. So significant investment in the AV. The larger question about any scope change or value engineering would need more work to prepare. That could be done jointly with the other discussions.
I just wonder at some point if, you know, before we have the unveiling of the building to the public, which I understand is supposed to be in late June, that we be aware of, that we be aware of things that we might have thought were going to be part of it that, for whatever reason, technical or financial, are, you know, not what we're going to see. It would be nice to know that.
Do we have monitors on the outside as well? Like in other words, if you're in the hall, can you see what's going on without having to go into the room?
We do have monitors that will be by the elevators. That's designed for PSAs, but they are networked and we're looking to see, you know, court dockets or meeting presentations out there, how to run that. Right now, they're stationary for PSAs, but the network is able to have ancillary space for viewing.
And other jurisdictions have a live feed of what's going on inside, so people won't have to keep opening the door to see where they are. It's, I think it's pretty useful to do.
Some of that's just programming and implementation as we progress.
We can figure that out.
But we have all the data jacks and the equipment there to be able to do it.
So we can do that.
And in other meeting rooms through the building, like Oak Room and others, where we did have monitors in the old city hall, are those, are like these monitors going to go back on the wall with those or are they going to get new monitors?
They're a mix of new monitors and saving the equipment that we had before because some of that was not outdated. All the rooms have the data jacks and electrical ports so that we can go mounting back, and so over time, those will be deployed again. The EOC Laurel Meeting Room is set up, Laurel Meeting Room is set up to be EOC. The EOC Laurel Meeting Room is set up, Laurel Meeting Room is set up to be EOC, so it also has the cable and the CNN and the closed loop technology. All of that's not deployed, so when you come into the meeting rooms now, you don't see them.
That's why, what prompted me to ask. I had one other question, I can't remember what it is now, but I'll think of it.
Mr. Z?
Well, it's, just to play off that, it's axiomatic that as you get ready to sell a new building or a, or even more importantly, a renovated building, sell it through, through time, that people won't tell you about the things that they really like. They won't tell you about the lack of carbon dioxide and increased productivity. You only hear about things that they don't like, so I'm sure you're already hearing that. And I can assure you that if council doesn't like our new chambers, you'll hear about that as well. Under lines 55 through 63, you talked about use of $40,000 to get a start on the leaf mulch facility. And it's our understanding that this is an investment in the beginning of a full facility. I'm not sure that everyone in the public is aware that of the city's commitment to maintaining the leaf mulch availability. And so could you explain more about the leaf mulch presentation that we have here?
Thank you, Councilmember Z. So currently, the city in the fall, when we pick up all the leaves, we take them to the area behind the softball field, to the, right, right by the baseball field behind the high school. And the leaves are stored there and then they are run through a grinder that breaks them down into the fine dark mulch that, that is then available to the public in the springtime. It's a great program. It's a great reuse of a natural resource to turn it into something that is used in all of our parks, but also can be used by homeowners as they do their, their spring mulching at their property. So we plan to stay, stick with that program, but we do need to make adjustments with the new high school because basically every square inch of that campus is now being used and the mulch facility needs to, to move to the property yard. So it'll be a smaller site, but we think we can use that space very efficiently. So the first step is to put down a good hard surface so that when we're scooping up the leaves and putting them into the grinder, gravel and other debris is not getting mixed into it, which will mess up the machinery. When we do the grinder, it is a dusty operation and typically it's for three days in the winter time. And so we'll work with our neighbors to mitigate any of those types of impacts, try to keep the leaf pile wet so we'll minimize dust. The next request will be to come to council in the fall for $150,000 expenditure to build a structure similar to the salt barn that is there now. And that would actually be sort of the backstop for when we're grinding the leaves to help contain some of the dust and impacts on the neighbors. So that's the, the basic idea. We'll have more details when we get to that next step and, and the, and the planning and execution.
Thank you.
That helped me remember, my last question was about the parking lot at city hall, paving and painting or either one. I mean particularly painting, but are we going to repave and try to repaint those parking stripes?
We are planning to mill and repave and restripe the front areas of the parking lot, not the entire lot in the back. We'll do that another time as funds allow. One of the other discussions with the EDC and the EDA is funding a milling and paving of the city-owned public parking lots in the downtown area. So we plan to do that as well and we'll get back with the council on the exact time of that. I think the initial goal was to have this paving work done before June 24th, our opening ceremony.
So the parking for city hall, which will be the front by the flagpoles and then down the side of the east wing is scheduled for June 5th and 6th for the milling. This Friday, you'll see some work in the parking lot because we're going to run a conduit so that we can have electricity and light the American flag out front. And it will be restripped to even out some of the spaces and for the real small compact spaces that can't even fit a compact, we'll be adjusting out.
So, so the little markers I see out, those are?
That's, that's.
Those are actually just for Memorial Day for the vendors. It just looked coincidental that we're paving.
Thank you for actually giving some parking space back.
That you can fit in.
Actually fit into.
Yeah, those are just for the vendors. Now, the handicap parking is the official location. It'll just be impermanent paint.
So one thing that is a policy change the city is embracing is, you may have noticed in places around the city where in the past we tried to squeeze in really small spaces and the city approach now is to make sure that all the spaces are usable for the public and you don't have fender benders and accidents. And if it does mean you lose a space or two, then so be it, but let's have high-quality spaces that people can use.
All right, are there other comments, Ms. Connelly?
Line 137, we're talking about reappropriating the Walter Mess Plaza funding? And I'm just wondering, is that a city project? Is that a W N O D project? Who's, is that, how far into that project are we? It seems like a long time since we talked about the Walter Mess Plaza.
So in terms of the order of the CIP, we do need to finish up the, the West Street and Great Falls project. That, that's the project being done in conjunction with Fairfax County and they are the lead on this and so we needed to produce some more money for it. We do have good funding for the W N O D project. We're right now in design for the plazas and that's a separate grant that we've gotten for this money. So we're doing that with the NVTA. Ultimately, the NVTA is going to do the work, but we're, we're administering the initial design so that we have more of a control and say over that design process. But that's a partnership with NVTA.
And the only reason for the delay is to make sure we were aligning the projects up with the dual trails and the crossing projects.
So when do we, this isn't going to happen soon then? This is multiple step process.
Right now that we, we have a new PM assigned to it with one of the new public work staff that you've been meeting. And so now we're looking at the finalizing, the design and the stormwater issues. And since Nova Parks is proceeding with their dual trails, we'll be able to reactivate it over this fiscal year into next hopefully. But not three years hopefully.
Any other comments or are there any other comments?
Just, just one more. When you mentioned Great Falls and that reminded me, I think OCOM did an announcement about what that project's about. I feel like I saw something on Facebook. But was there a citizen asked this weekend, you know, what does that project look like? Is there, does that have a link to what we're actually doing at, at Great Falls in the west?
It should, but let me check, make sure that that posting does have a link to it. Yeah, because it's, it's a, there's a sidewalk on the county side, there's enhanced ped crossings, there'll be ped heads.
The citizen was asking about the culvert, which is there on our side and I didn't know whether that was going to be filled in or widened or whatever.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure of that detail. But we will, if you, if you want to, if you have an email, we can also forward, get back in touch with that institution directly.
Yeah, I know, yeah, somebody lives on West Falls Way.
All right, unless there are any other comments, I'm going to ask for public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing now the matter is closed, the public, Madam Clerk, or do we have a resolution?
Somebody needs to move it. I might as well. Move the graph for first reading to TR 19. That's show six, zero six, schedule the second reading of public hearing for June 10th, 2019, and advertise the same according to law.
All right, do we have a second? A second. All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Baba. Nice work. Big consent agenda, lots of appointments and reappointments and the like. Is there, anyone would like to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, remind me if I just want to speak to one of the items, do I have to remove it or can?
I don't know, I'm going to say no, so let's go ahead.
Good answer.
All right. Okay, so do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda then?
Yeah, move all the items on the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Duncan, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one. One of the consent items, number D, is the appointment of Cory Farster and Weiss to the Planning Commission, which is great, good news for the city. She's, of course, distinguished herself in service on the Environmental Services Sustainability Committee and will be a great planning commissioner. Appreciate the work of the Appointments Committee to keep bringing high-quality members of all the important boards and commissions, but especially the Planning Commission. Just wanted to say though that it does, this action tonight marks a significant event in the history of the city in that the seat that Cory will be taking is being given up by Lindy Hockenberry, who has, as we all know, served the community in many capacities for many decades. As a school teacher, award-winning school teacher, as a city council member, vice mayor, as a planning commissioner for the last decade. If you believe that generally speaking, the community has been on an upward trajectory for the last 20 or 30 years, Lindy has had her hand in almost all of the things that are good and getting better about Falls Church. And I had a chance to talk with her last week and, you know, just sound her out a little bit about what her future plans are. I think she wants to remain active and has been appointed to the ASAC committee up at the high school, which will keep her involved in, you know, the actual fitting out and getting up and running of the high school, which seems particularly appropriate since she spent so many years as a teacher in our school system. That's a great role for her to play. And of course, I didn't get to mention it tonight because I'm not sure she was here, but she's involved in the CBC Youth Reps Initiative. She's basically our contact with the kids up at the school to get them to, you know, submit their applications and, and she's performed a very valuable service in that regard and the vice mayor and others who are involved in the Women's History Project can speak to Lindy's role in that. I would ask that we begin to, begin to make plans for appropriate party, as Mr. Z says, recognitions and observances of Ms. Hockenberry's tenure during the month of June. Cory's term takes effect on July the 8th, so we have some time, but if anybody, certainly the CBC folks are interested in being involved in or helping with anything, we've talked about it a little bit with the clerk, there will be opportunities, hopefully multiple opportunities at the Planning Commission and City Council and CBC meetings to recognize Lindy's exemplary and sustained and significant service to our community. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. I just want to go on the record as saying that it, it's difficult to see Lindy moving on, but she continues to remain involved in a number of organizations. And from my perspective, Lindy really is the mold when it comes to public service to the community. And Councilman Duncan listed off a litany of things that she's been involved in. She's really been an inspiration and continues to be an inspiration for anyone that's looking to volunteer their time in any way in this community. She was a personal inspiration for me when I first decided to consider running for council and she continues to inspire children, friends, neighbors and anyone in the community that's, that's looking to make a difference. And so I know she will continue to stay involved, but certainly I don't think enough can be said for what she has committed to and contributed to the city of Falls Church. I mean, it's just absolutely astounding and in, and in many cases, something that is difficult for most folks to find the time or the passion to provide to the city, but, but she's absolutely cherished and again, I think is the mold when it comes to service to the community on so many different fronts.
All right, are there any other, Vice Mayor Connelly?
This past March, we recognized Lindy Hockenberry as one of the four honorary grand marshals for the Women's History Walk for many of the things that Mr. Duncan and Mr. Lichtenhouse mentioned. And one of the most admirable things about Lindy is that she shows up all the time. She goes to meetings, she makes comments and she is always at sporting events at George Mason High School, truly the number one fan of George Mason High School and she has been for many years. And our community is better for it. So I appreciate all of Lindy's service and hope that she will continue to remain involved in the community for many years to come.
Ms. Hardy?
It's hard to follow all these great comments, but I just want to echo that sentiment. And for everyone watching out there, hopefully it encourages the next generation to step up and follow in Lindy's footsteps.
Okay, well, listen, I want to also, there's not much I think to be left to be said, but she has made extraordinary contributions to our community and I hope and am confident we'll find an opportunity to properly honor her service to the city of Falls Church in the coming days. With that, do we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote please, the roll call?
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So let's move on to business not on the agenda. Is there any business not on the agenda? Any standing regional committee or council liaison reports? All right, any council member comments? Vice Mayor has two.
Mr. Shields, I saw an announcement earlier today that there's, the community meeting on June 8th has narrowed its scope regarding the comprehensive plan and now it's going to be about the demographic chapter and the housing chapter.
That is correct. So since our last work session, there has been a meeting with the Environmental Services Council, the Planning Commission rep, Mr. Z and staff. And, and in looking through, I think the, the wisdom was let's take some additional time on this chapter. It's a really important chapter, let's get it right. And I think also your words of advice through this about it's a whole lot to have three going through at one time, I think was also part of that, that thinking. So that is correct. We'll focus on those two with the council requested action in late July and work for the Natural Resources Chapter in the early fall.
I do have two, sorry. So that event is June 8th?
Yes.
In the morning. And I just want to remind everyone that June 8th in the afternoon to the evening is the Tanner Hill Music Festival. And everywhere I've been in the last week, I've seen Tori McKinney carrying signs around and she's asking people to put signs in their yards and signs in their businesses. She's offering discounts to city employees and school employees and first responders, buy one, get one free tickets. And she's also looking for lots of volunteers to help out and volunteers get in for free. So I would encourage the whole community to get out there and support this event. It's going to be really wonderful and the more the merrier.
All right, that sounds good. Are there any other council member comments?
Just one, I'm sorry, I meant to ask this to Cindy earlier. The TV station, are we aligning there getting fired back up again with moving into the new chambers or what's our plan for?
Correct.
Live broadcasts of the fabulous Falls Church City Council?
The TV room, there's a standalone TV room behind chambers where their equipment will be housed in both chambers and Dogwood can run live concurrent TV broadcasts once we're back in and operating.
Wow, split screen, how are we going to handle that? That's interesting. So the server that was ordered is, is it still here or is it still coming and being hooked up or what's?
Yep, that server is at the station and it's being programmed and that'll stay stationary and all the equipment that'd be housed in the racks at city hall are being configured and ready for install once the room is ready.
So we really, we'll try to start as soon as we move back over there to, we're not likely to do it sooner than that, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Yeah, just one question. Can we confirm the dates on the opening of council chambers as well as the ribbon cutting for city hall? I know there's a June 24th. Does anybody want to commit?
That's the date for ribbon cutting cornerstone and then council's first meeting.
Okay.
But the, correct. Right now, we're looking at 10 a.m. I am waiting to hear back from Judge O'Brien because of course, we've invited the judge and she'd like Judge McQ to be able to come as well. So we're trying to fine tune their time and dock it for that actual part, but it would be in the morning. Open house all day so citizens can come in and check out the offices. Open house all day so citizens can come in and check out the offices, and then that evening.
And we don't want to move that just one week later? Plan it on it.
Well, we were timing it to a regular council meeting, so it'd be your first meeting, but--
Or the week after that.
All right, let's keep on working on that, but anyway, any other comments?
So we do not meet next Monday, correct? So is the mayor having a mayor's meeting tomorrow?
No, we've got a notice that it's canceled.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, anything else, or should we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.